Girl. All right. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is November 9th, 2022. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. This is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. I don't believe that we received any public comment prior to the meeting, correct? Okay, thank you. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners. A moment of silence, silent reflection, honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes. Previous meeting is written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. So it looks like we have a full complement this evening and I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session. It's part of their November 7th, 2022 workshop meeting to discuss three personnel matters and one real estate matter. At this time, I would like to invite Bob Gatawski to the front of the room. One up, up. I would ask Commissioner Standish to join you. Commissioner Standish, please read into record.
Scareless here.
Pretty good. So Commissioner Standish, if you read a resolution.
I'm going to read the resolution. I wanted, before I say, I just want to say, you know, I go back a long time with Bob and we both go back to Pittsburgh. Great, go Steelers, right? Yeah, bye week last week. You know, anyway, Mr. Oz is on TV and I will say that Bob, you know, I started out in the Planning Commission many moons ago with Bob and he has been our guiding light and I've just learned so much from, you know, sitting next to him and listening to him and thinking, watching, you know, deal with these often very complicated projects and, you know, seeing how his mind works and he's led us into the, into the fray so many times that we're really going to miss you. So, so let me read this resolution, number 1584. Whereas Robert Bob Gatawski was appointed as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission on May 13th, 1998 and served continuously until his retirement earlier this year. And whereas in January 2006, Bob was elected by his fellow Planning Commission members to serve as a chairman of the Planning Commission, a position he held until 2020. And whereas a member of the chairman, as a member and chairman of the Planning Commission, Bob was instrumental in proposing several planning amendments to the Township zoning code, the Township subdivision and land development ordinance, and the Township comprehensive plan, among others. And whereas Mr. Gatawski has a strong foundational background in urban forestry, is a well-rounded horticulturalist and is a mentor to many. And whereas in September 2022, Bob retired as a Director of Visitor Experiences and Education for the Morris Arboretum of the United, of the University of Pennsylvania, where he was employed for the last 36 years. And whereas an employee of the Morris Arboretum, Bob played a vital role in the restoration of the historic Springfield Mill and championed the paper mill run wetlands restoration. And whereas under date of June 28th, 2022, Robert Bob Gatawski tendered his resignation from the Springfield Township Planning Commission effective September 20th, 2022. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township wishes to thank and commend Mr. Gatawski for his many years of tireless effort and dedicated volunteerism for the good of the Springfield Township community and extends his best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Be it further resolved that it is the intention of the Board of Commissioners to plant a tree.
Oh.
Didn't know about this, huh? At Cisco Park, where you can walk down and take your grandchildren down there and show it off every day, right? In honor of Bob's outstanding service to the Springfield, to Springfield Township. And this will be unanimously adopted this ninth day of November 2022, the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township. And that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Well.
Absolutely. Well, let's take the vote and then you can, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Bob, the floor is yours.
We can't have the light shining off it, you know? Wow. All right. Well, that's true. What a surprise. Yeah. Thank you so much. So, if I might comment. Okay, good. I actually wrote it down. I, be it resolved, whereas, whereas I want to thank you for this resolution and the tree was such a surprise. It's really been an honor to serve with the members of the Planning Commission and I thank them. They're such a, they're a really good group. I've always been grateful for the opportunity to serve in a township where we enjoy local government by the people. I'll share one observation.
Bob, just to be safe, can you turn the microphone? I just want to make sure you don't miss it on record. There you go.
All right. I'll share one observation. We meet tonight between Election Day and Veterans Day, between exercising the idea of democracy and acknowledging those who selflessly defended that idea. It's been my experience overall that the township officials, volunteers, and the staff serve unselfishly to enable the community's interests and well-being. I'm proud to have played a citizen's part in our local democratic process and I offer my gratitude to you all and to those who served before us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well deserved.
Going home.
The rest is pretty boring. You should. So long. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Yes, absolutely. Just one at a time, please. Don't rush the microphone. If you could, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erin McCrossan. I live at 8102 Flower Town Avenue in Windmore. I'm happy to be here again. I know most of you, we were, me and my co-authors were here last year presenting the results of our survey on police community relations. I'm sure you all remember. So I just wanted to read the open letter that we sent in this past April. I watched the last month's meeting with dismay and concern about this issue and I'm, I'm upset that this issue continues to be such a, causing such division in our community. And so I just wanted to reread the, the letter that I've sent to all of you previously. Dear Chief Pitco, Mr. Taylor, Springfield Township Commissioners and Springfield Police Benevolent Association, PBA leaders. We have recently been made aware of the controversy surrounding the Springfield PBA's adoption of the thin blue line flag as its symbol. We write this letter to highlight data from the perceptions of STPD's Police Community Relations Survey we conducted last year and presented at the September 13th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting and urge you to consider the information in discussions and the decision-making process. As noted in the survey results, the majority of township respondents support the principles of community policing, unity and respect for all of Springfield's residents, inclusive of police. A key takeaway was that residents support our local police and want to see improvements. The most salient suggestion involved community building efforts, including quote proactive statements of support for all residents, leadership and accountability, and proactively addressing racism, and listening and understanding racial bias concerns. Below are specific findings that contributed to this recommendation. We also included direct quotes at the end of the email, which I won't read today, but I'm happy to circulate this email again and the slides. Number one, our African-American and black neighbors who responded to the survey were less satisfied with police interactions and outcomes than our white neighbors. Two, the most common reason for not wanting to report crime or suspicious activity was because residents feared that the police department would be racially biased or use biased or use excessive force. And number three, commenters of all races and ethnicities described incidents and expressed concerns about how their African-American friends and family members were treated by our Springfield Police Department. The PBA states on its website that its purpose is to enhance the mutual interest of both the members of the Springfield Township PBA and the citizens they are sworn to protect and serve, a purpose that seems consistent with the original intent of the thin blue line flag as a symbol of support for law enforcement. Unfortunately, the flag has become, has also become associated with white nationalism, as well as opposition to racial justice, and has been banned by some police departments for impeding efforts to build trust with communities. In the spirit of its mission, we urge the PBA to consider a less divisive, or better yet, not divisive at all, symbol that simultaneously supports, support, shows support for law enforcement and unity among officers and unity among community members. The results of our survey suggest that township residents want to support both. Given the 22 reality, however, the thin blue line flag symbol has set the stage for some people to feel like they have to choose a side between police and civilians. We believe this is a damaging, dangerous, and false dichotomy that does not serve Springfield Township, our police department, nor the goal of building community, building community and community policing. To support the well-being of Springfield Township police officers, the overall department and our township, we plead for strong leadership on this issue. As we shared in our presentation of survey results, research shows that citizens are more likely to cooperate with police efforts to prevent and solve crime when they perceive that police are trustworthy and legitimate. When there is a loss of trust and police legitimacy, public safety is at risk and the job of policing is made more difficult. So regardless of whether the PBA chooses to replace its symbol, we recommend the following actions. Number one, in the short term, participate in interview, intergroup communication efforts to engage in critical dialogue. Evidence from research and theory on intergroup communication offers a path toward overcoming intergroup barriers and expanding mutual respect between law enforcement and the communities they serve. The ideal of community policing inspires police to build cohesive relationships with communities as a means of co-producing public safety. Implementing that ideal has often been difficult due to, in part, to communication challenges between police and communities. If neither the police department or commissioners can cover the cost of trained facility, facilitators, we offer to investigate funding, fundraising mechanisms for doing so. In the long term, we suggest forming a task force to research best practices in policing, review our Springfield Police Department data, speak to both police officers and community members about concerns and the professional culture of our department, and provide recommendations for how our police department can best implement practices of a community policing model. Given the importance of the current issue only made more important by last month's meeting, we are prepared to return to a commissioners meeting or other spaces to further review survey findings, the literature on community policing, and our recommendations. And that was signed by me, Rachel Groner and Helen Chau. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Anyone else?
Please. My name's Claire Janowitz. I've lived in Orland for 33 years. So Erin, that letter went to all the commissioners? And did you get any responses? So do you have the ability tonight to tell us? Or give us a response to that letter?
Yeah, well, let me, let me frame the, the PBA emblem issue just because it's been a forefront.
I'm pretty aware of it. I mean, I don't think you have to, but if you.
Yeah, I know. But you know, I mean, you see, you saw last week's meeting. There's been discussion about it at several public meetings. We discussed it as a board, both publicly and in executive. And just as a matter of background, we did ask the PBA to change the logo and to date, they have declined to do so. We took the next step of we sent more of a formal, formal letter that was drafted by our solicitor and we are awaiting a response on that. So that's still within the, the response time of that. But I will tell you that the conversations are ongoing. There's a number of word members here that, that do feel strongly about it and are continuing, try that work. It's, it's not a simple solution, both from a legal standpoint and sort of the rhetoric that has built it up until now. So if you watched last month's meeting or the one in April, you're probably really aware of that. So, but, and unfortunately, probably for the better part of this year, that, that debate, which has been sort of painful in some ways, has really, you know, sucked the oxygen out of other efforts in regards to policing. And a lot of, I'm very familiar with, with Erin and the recommendations in the survey. And we do want to get, get back to, to really tackling all those things and because there's always good improvement that can be made. So.
So is there a, is there a deadline for, for that action?
Do we have a?
There's a deadline in the letter, yes.
Yeah.
It's, they still have about two weeks.
Okay, it's coming up. So it's within the next two weeks.
And does the police department report to the commissioners?
Well, the police, the police, the, of the commissioners operates as a board and is filtered through the township manager and township assistant manager, who are, you know, for lack of a better analogy, a CEO reports to a board of a company and CEO manages the day-to-day. So the board has ultimate decision-making on all policy, where the gray area comes in with the PBA, the organization, the Police Benevolent Association, is their bargaining unit, basically their union of rank and fire members that does not include the higher ranked administrators of the police department. So, for example, we just negotiated a new contract for that. And really, the police chief and lieutenant are really on the other side of the table in terms of, of working conditions and contracts. So that's basically their bargaining unit. It is not technically the police department. So that's why there's a little gray area in, if the police department is using it, we as a board would have the authority to say that's not okay. And, and, and we would vote to disallow that.
But you're saying the union is using it, not the police department?
That's correct.
PBA is a private entity.
Separate.
Right.
Oh, okay. Even though it has Springfield Township on the logo?
It's the same as, it's the Springfield Township Girl Scout.
And so if the pre, if the Springfield Township Girl Scouts had a symbol that was racist and dangerous and terrible, you would just have to accept it. Is that correct?
If it's a terrible racist symbol, it would be actually subject to multiple.
Right.
But, yeah. And I mean, that's where the, the prayer.
Uh huh.
Commissioner Cobb, your microphone's off.
That's all right. I can hear him. So.
But for the matter of the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Right. So is there a way we could have the commissioners let us know who supports the symbol and who doesn't? Can we just go down the line or is that not appropriate?
I don't think it's appropriate, ma'am. And, and I don't think anything is a question of support. I think it's a, it's a question of the commissioners would like to see things go a certain way. And this has been something that we've been talking with the PBA about for almost a year, I guess. And there's strong feelings on that side too. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of, it's a very, very difficult problem. And we're, we're doing our best.
And I would, I would just add, Claire, that I'm, and I'm personally in the process of talking with them, setting up a meeting again. So, so I don't want to be just, you know, blabbing about publicly when we're trying to, you know, get to a common place. So, and if that doesn't happen pretty soon, then, you know, at least we, 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 we gave it that, that final try after those divisive meetings.
And right. I'm sorry. And just one more question. Does the community have any more say in it?
Well, the community has any say in it. I mean, you can, you can always come to public meetings. You can always reach out to your commissioners. You can reach out to them directly. You absolutely have a say.
Okay, thank you.
And at the end of the day.
And ended a PBA directly, sure.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, the PBA is, it's, it's one of their main missions is it's a fundraising arm for that association, for them to do things with the money they raise. So ultimately, and there's solicit, solicitations to the public, if their solicitations are offensive or, or, you know, disagreeable to individuals and they decide that they're not going to give money. And that's, that's one way that, you know, there's a way to respond. And so ultimately, you know, a lot of the community doesn't, if they don't meet their fundraising goals, I mean, that's, you know, one way that the community can certainly respond.
Is it, would it be better to, for us to directly approach them as opposed to the commissioners?
Well, I, I mean, you can certainly do both. And I would, I mean, if you feel strongly about it, you should do both. I would, I probably wouldn't take the angle of the, you know, financial support of it, but they may be more receptive to hearing it from members of the public than hearing the same drumbeat, you know, from the commissioners and feeling like they're being strong-darmed as something they want to do.
And what happens if they don't meet the deadline?
We'll talk about that when, and if that happens.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Can I just make one?
Absolutely.
Just, just one very, very important point. I, I would not want anyone to think that any member of the PBA wants to have a racially divisive symbol. They take the position, and I'd like to be very clear on this, that it's not racially divisive and that they basically had it first and that's where the arguments start. And, but it's, it's not their, to be fair, it is not their goal to have a symbol that, that is offensive to anybody in the community. They just don't believe it is offensive.
In fact, I mean, just, yeah, just the opposite. I mean, it's a intimately personal, intimately important symbol to them that speaks to, you know, their profession, their values, their fraternity. And so one thing that I have desperately tried to promote is just an open dialogue between both sides. And ideally, both sides listening to each other. And so rather coming at it with, you know, this vile or offensive symbol, you know, let me share with you what this symbol means to me when I see it and how it, how I react to it. But in turn, I'd also like to hear what the symbol means to you. And through that, create an open dialogue and maybe come to some, some sort of common understanding of mutual respect. And I think, you know, the one thing is, most of the members would be delighted to have that conversation, particularly, you know, in a one-on-one or a very respectful setting. So that's, that's the way I would approach it.
So our two recommendations along that line, those lines are for the dialogue, but a facilitated dialogue by professional mediators, basically, right? That's what that particular recommendation was for, because I don't, does not feel from my observer lens, that the dialogues so far have, have gotten us very far, right? Maybe we need some sort of professional sort of third party, so to speak mediator. And maybe there are fundraising mechanisms that we can help figure that, figure out. So we can kind of move forward on this. And the second one was to set up some sort of advisory. Maybe the commissioners can do this, right? Some sort of advisory group to help with those efforts, right? Research those types of things. So I just wanted to distinguish those two particular recommendations. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Betsy Wallace, Pine Road in Windmore. I just wanted to say, echo what Erin has said. In fact, she and I talked soon after the April business meeting about the PBA flag. I sent a letter to every single member of this commission in April, probably around April 7th, and didn't hear from anyone. And in that letter, I suggested similar things than Erin did, which was some, actually some things that would not cost anything. And furthering discussion, facilitate, moderated civil discussion about race, not just about the PBA flags. I, the PBA flag is one, one issue, but I, I sense that there is an underlying issue of not wanting to deal with the possibility that, that there are some people in our community who are of color, who do not feel the same way about how they're being served in this community as those of us who are white. So that's a difficult topic for anybody. And so Erin and I are suggesting that instead of pretending it isn't there, to get some help in facing it. We are not the only township that has to deal with this. Some other townships have dealt better with it, I think, some municipalities, but certainly here, I think we've got the goodwill and the good sense of our residents to participate in something like this, one-on-one, in moderated discussions with small groups, with commission members, with the police. I mean, it can take all kinds of forms, but the, the goal, the ultimate goal is to encourage really deep discussion about race.
If I can add to that, Betsy, just last week, a week ago, last Wednesday, the opportunity was made affordable for that discussion. We had members from the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, along with psychologists from the University of Penn, along with experts that were given historical facts on the PBA, I mean, I'm sorry, on the Blue Lives Matter flag, along with people that were expert in dealing with it in other communities. We made a formal invite to both the PBA and to the Springfield Township Police Chief. Both refused to attend the meeting. And I think that is the issue. The offer has been made to address the issue and we want to have a conversation concerning this issue. We realize we can't do it with just having one side. You just hear one side or you just hear the other side. There is never a meeting of the minds in order for both parties that have opposing views to the sign to come together. We've been trying to reach out to both groups for months and no response from either group. So I once again would love to have that opportunity to facilitate that, but not only saying that for me to facilitate it, but with the experts that have been dealing with this for many years in that field. So we have made the opportunity and I will once again make that olive branch to both sides. Because in order, I don't believe what happened last month is Springfield Township. That is not Springfield Township. And I think that by having both minds come together and, and meeting to discuss this and to see why it is so not offensive to one side and, but how it is offensive to another side, just having the meeting of the minds, I truly believe that we can come up with an amicable solution that can make both parties happy. So I, well, we will once again be extending that olive branch to both the PBA and to our police chief. I just hope that they accept it.
Betsy, I, I thought we had some dialogue after the email. I feel like I did respond to that. I know, and I know we talked about it live too.
Well, I know we talked about it a lot before the meeting, but not after.
Okay. I thought we had some email exchange.
Yeah. I sent it on my personal email. You might not have been aware of that note to be Wallace. But I also sent it to all of your official email addresses, township addresses. Thanks.
Just one point of clarity about the meeting Eddie mentioned is important and I Just one point of clarity about the meeting Eddie mentioned is important, and I would like to attend those. It was with somewhat short notice, so I just wouldn't characterize it that, that they refused in that it was very short notice. And it was scheduled on the night that we had a budget meeting, so none of the other commissioners had a chance to participate. So.
Mr. President, what would you consider a short notice?
It was under, it was probably 10 days' notice.
No, sir. It was, it was out of over 30 days.
No, it wasn't. It just wasn't.
It just wasn't sent to you, but it was sent to the PBA, and it was sent to, and I can forward the letter that was sent out to invite both parties to make sure that the commissioners are aware that it was sent more than 30 days before the meet. Because we had to set up and facilitate all of the moderators, and it just so happened that all of the facilitators could not attend the meeting. Unfortunately, it was the night of the budget. That was not intentionally done. That was the only night that all of the facilitators from the P, and I'm sorry, from the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, the professors from the University of Penn, along with the other presidents from the NAACP, and the other sociologists and historians that attended, thought was the only night that they were all able to attend. So it was not done to be the same night of the budget meeting. That is, that is not true. It just so could just coincide. But those invitations to all of those parties were sent out 30 days in advance. Maybe the commissioners just didn't know, because I did not send it out to the commissioners.
Well, Mike Taylor forwarded us the email that where you invited the chief and the PBA. And that was probably the Friday or Saturday before our October meeting.
That's not true. That's not true. But I, I can forward the menu.
I can pull up the email and have the date on it.
So can I.
Okay, let's do it.
So can I.
It's important to get the facts right. I'm just.
And I just want to do that.
People are refusing.
I can't believe that you would put out in the atmosphere that I get all of this with all of those people that came out within 10 days. That was not happening. That did not happen.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Ellen Stevenson, 18 Rose Lane, Flower Town. I just want to also echo the recommendation that Erin made with regard to bringing in a professional facilitator. It was evident to me at the last meeting that emotions were extremely high, and also they are probably here tonight as well. So I'm just asking that, I hope you take that recommendation and move on it. This is a growing issue in the community. Eddie had mentioned the percentage of people of color in the community, but it's also an issue in the white community. So I think with tempers the way they are, let's, let's move on this quickly. And I just want to also mention, and I was very surprised at this, in doing some reaching, some research on the blue line flag, that it was, it is being used as the main backdrop for the past president's rallies. I recall his using the American flag profusely, but not only using a huge blue line flag, but also the blue line on his dais. And it's now taking a political position as well. And also, just the history of the insurrection. I think it's getting worse, this whole situation, than it's getting any better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Hi, good evening. Never done this before, so I'm not sure what you need from me.
Just state your name and address and feel free to share.
My name is Caroline Schuman. I live at Weiss Avenue. I've been in communication with all of you in regards to the public safety of myself and my children. This evening, I had four police officers come out to my house after threats were made once again towards my two children. I want you to put a face with these two children, because that house belongs to a commissioner on this board and his son who resides and makes threats to my children on a daily basis. Four police officers came out tonight, agreed that there was enough to charge him, then walked outside, turned their body cams off, as I observed them shaking his hand as he walked away. So I would like this board to put a face with my children, who have to live next to this man on a daily basis, listen to his vulgarities, his threats, his threats to run them over with his truck, his threats when nobody's home, as he walks up and down the driveway, which has all been provided to the police on video. And for those of you that have responded to my emails, I greatly appreciate it. Nothing has changed. It continues as of 6 o'clock tonight. So I come to you today to put faces to the emails I have sent you. They are six and seven years old. They go to Enfield Elementary, and it's got to stop. So I don't know what else can be done, but I am going source to source now to let you all know that as residents of Springfield, something needs to happen. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, excuse me, before you really.
We talked.
I'm not leaving them. They're terrified.
Are we, no, can you give a five minutes? We can just talk to you for a second?
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
Mike, the suggestion that body cameras were turned off or something like that, I mean, that's a, that's a serious.
A subpoena was sent tonight requesting the body cam footage, because the body cams were on in my house. As the officers went outside, the body cams were turned off. And when I called the officers out on it, because I went back out to acknowledge that one of the officers shook this man's hand, they all quickly turned their body cams right back on.
Well, because, mostly because they were engaged with you as the complainant again. Once the, once they've satisfied the complaint and they leave, they don't have the body cams on 24/7.
So the fourth officer that was there screamed at me that he did have it on. He goes, I've had mine on the whole time. So all four of their body cam was subpoenaed tonight by the attorney. I am in contact with the Montgomery County District Attorney. I see C. Officer Chief Pitco, as well as my attorney as well. I'm not going to have something happen to my children or any of your children. He drinks and drives in the community. The police are well aware of this. They have his license plate. They have his brother's license plate. I'm not going to allow something to happen to somebody's child in this community. I'm not going to let it happen. And I've been, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure, but I have been in contact with everybody else on this board with very little response or suggestion or anything, mostly silence.
I, I, obviously I have to comment. This is my son. My son has lived there for almost five years, your neighbor, when he first moved in. I think there was a good relationship or a fair.
Absolutely not.
Okay. One of the biggest aggravation points in this relationship with these two neighbors is the fact that they share a driveway. It's a constant, has been a constant source of problems. When my son has tried to, you know, use a driveway, yes, he parks his, he has a small, small business, parks his truck in the back, and has been unable many, many times to be unable to get in and finish his day, you know, day's work and put his truck away.
That is absolutely blatantly a lie. Absolutely. It's absolutely blatantly for the board a lie.
Okay, this, this woman and my son have never had, obviously, a good relationship. And, and she has made repeated accusations.
Your son on video.
On social media.
To run those two children over with a truck. Look at those children, Mr. Wilson. Your son.
Has he run your children over with a truck?
Let me respectfully suggest that this is not an appropriate item to be discussed.
It absolutely is, because the public is so disgusted by the lack of response. I've lived in Springfield my entire life, since the day I was born until now. The public is disgusted.
Ma'am, you already made your speech and no one interrupted you.
Absolutely.
And no one's interrupted you now. We're just saying that this back and forth gets nobody anywhere in terms.
You're absolutely right, because I'm not going to allow a man to stand here and tell me that it is justified that his son threatened to run my two children over.
I never said that.
He did. He just said it's because we can't share a driveway.
What he said is subject to a lot of interpretation.
Correct. His response.
Belong in this room.
The words that his son hurls at my children and I, all day, every day, do not belong in this room. But every one of those videos, as I've sent many of you, some of you have a video of him at 11 o'clock at night screaming my five-year-old son in the middle of a driveway's name. I sure hope that it never comes to your doorstep, or somebody like this tortures your children or your wife the way that that man has tortured mine.
Understood, ma'am.
Ma'am, I, it sounds like you're extremely accepting, upset you've been dealing with this, and, and I take this very seriously. So I'm listening to you. I think what Mr. Gary is saying, it's the, the he said, she said here is not so helpful.
She said, four police were at my house two hours ago.
So.
Viewed videos.
Well, because you called them.
Correct, because your son turned around and went fuck you, fuck you, fuck you to my two sons. And they viewed the video. And from that video, they said, great, now we have enough to charge him. Then walked outside, as I saw them standing on my front porch, and shook his hand as he walked away. So if you don't understand my frustration, I apologize, but that's not my job.
Was my son charged?
He will be. We will have an arraignment, they said, a hearing, a trial. And there's a protection from intimidation that's been filed against him for my two young children. But you want to blame me for not access to the driveway?
I'm saying that has been, that has been the friction point.
The friction point is that your son has mental health and drinking issues, which you have acknowledged in writing. Would you like to see the email that you sent me?
All right, ma'am, listen.
You asked me to come back in. There's no other.
I, I've asked you numerous times to meet, and you refused.
Correct, because I'm afraid of your son. I am afraid.
Meet with me, and you're afraid. And you refuse to.
I am absolutely afraid of you and your son. Yeah.
Ma'am, I think you're doing the right thing. If you feel like you're not getting the correct response from the police department, and they haven't performed, and you filed complaints, and you feel like it's a danger, then it sounds like you're doing the right thing.
Yes, thank you.
To the DA, let them investigate.
I forwarded all the videos this evening. There are 100 videos from just this week alone.
Okay.
They were forwarded to the police tonight.
Okay.
Thank.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that we can't help in terms of just hearing the story. I mean, are, we need to have the police involved. If you feel like they're not serving you properly, there's other avenues. And I respect that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Tall enough? Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Tamita Jordan. I'm on, in Windmore, on Louise Lane. And I was not at some of the previous meetings, but have spent quite a bit of time watching commissioner meeting videos. That, of course, has been very disturbing over the last several months. The issue around the flag is difficult. I think lots of people have recognized and said the amount of communication, the heightened feelings and emotions that people have as a result of that, and this issue on both sides. For those who are okay with it, and for those residents who are not okay with it, it's difficult. I think as a way to be helpful is for residents to understand the relationship between you all as our leaders, for this township, the Police Benevolent Association, and the Police Department of Springfield Township. I think there's some confusion or misinterpretation over authority, responsibility for kind of all three of those, you know, areas. And I have had a lot of thought about how do we clear up confusion? And as our elective leaders embody, I think it is important for residents to hear from you on what that is, what it means, who the PBA is. I think someone earlier asked who was in charge, whose responsibility is it for what they do? Understanding from the information on their website that it's for support an event. But earlier you mentioned it was also the body used as a collective bargaining unit for the police department. So there's lots of overlapping confusion in my mind. I don't know if it's in anybody else's. So I think as a resident of this community, as a resident of color of this community, I think, you know, at nausea, you've already heard what the meaning of this flag means for Black and Brown residents. It doesn't matter to me personally whether the offense is felt by one, or if it's felt by 1,001. I chose to be a resident of Springfield Township. I have enjoyed being a resident here. I felt respected here. I've served here on our school board, and it has been one of the greatest honors. But this flag is disturbing. And whether it means anything to anybody else, I think just as an understanding of who's responsible as a resident, what can we do? How can we support whatever efforts you are putting forth? I understand it's a letter. We're waiting for a response. I don't know whether there has been open dialogue with the PBA. I think there are many residents of this community who would welcome the opportunity to share our concerns, our feelings, our emotions, whatever it may be of what this means for us. I think Commissioner Cobb, you're absolutely right. I think having, it's okay to disagree. The temperature of the situation is important. And I think the only way to fully understand what that temperature is, is to hear from the people that it greatly affects the most. So if there's any suggestions that you have for residents of what we can do, what the next step is, how we can support you, which hopefully you support us. I think we would all be open to hear that, and it's not going away. And courageous conversations are difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, I certainly know your, your voice is really appreciated and important and heard. There's a lot to unpack there. I know we've talked about this sort of ad nauseam, but the conversation is not over. We are awaiting response in the letter. As I mentioned earlier, I am taking personal efforts to, to continue the conversation. So I'm not prepared right now to say, here's the step after that, after that, after that, but it's going to continue. And like I said, your, your voice is really important to that.
If I could just say a few things. Well, first, I'd like to tackle the previous person, because it's unrelated to what I really want to talk about, but I can create a link here. This person came forward and expressed a concern about how police handled a situation for her. You know, I have not received a workplace email on that, but I understand this is a situation, the police, in her view, did something that she didn't believe was right. And of course, the right place to do that for anyone is to come forward and tell us, either through email or through a forum like this, much like theoretically what all of you are doing right now. You're saying that there's a little blurry line between all these organizations, and it feels to you that the police officers have, you know, used this emblem on behalf of our township, if I'm not, if I'm, you know, not mishearing this. And I understand that there's confusion in that regard. But I hope you all understand that we also are dealing with the many webs of this. And that may be why it may appear as though things are moving at a snail's pace when we try to untangle this web, because that confusion creates, as you heard reference, not just logistical issues, but potentially legal issues. And we have to be tactful about approaching all of this. All that to say that, for, for my part, I have no problem sharing my view that.
All that to say that, for, for my part, I have no problem sharing my view that it is a very difficult thing to say that this organization, this, you know, alleged private organization does not represent the Springfield Township Police. While that may be true on paper, I know that's how, that, that's not how it's perceived. That's just a reality. Now, again, what happens legally and, and all of that is different than what this, this perceived reality is. Interestingly, I did not know that this was going to be a topic at the forefront, and I had drafted a statement that I wanted to read. And if my fellow commissioners allow me to read that now, I would, I would like to do that and, and see if this will help. But I really wanted to address last month's events as well. And I was going to wait until, I typically have the last item on the agenda, and I want to have everyone be heard and then speak, you know, at my turn, but seeing as it's salient, I just want to read what I wrote to address some of this. I want to address directly the events of last month, when a group of people may have appeared to seemingly randomly come to speak regarding the Police Benevolent Association's use of a symbol. What it turned into was an unwarranted assailant of my colleague, Commissioner Graham, even indicating that his conversations about race are somehow by itself racist or divisive. And I want to be clear that bringing up race, marginalization of racial groups, disparity in treatment due to race, and the existence of racial bias is a completely acceptable concern at the township level, acceptable concern for our residents. Not only acceptable, but sometimes warranted, such as it has been for the conversation around how to unaffiliate our township with a symbol that may shed a negative light on our police force. No one should be vilified for speaking their truth unless that truth is purely gross, as racism is. And Commissioner Graham's truth seems to me that he has experiences as a black man, as a leader in the black community, to share, experiences to share regarding racially insensitive matters, such as when actions or symbols that create barriers to communication and goodwill between communities of color and government come up. And the clear goal of his sharing these perspectives, to me, would be to improve our community by ensuring all people feel welcome, accepted, and safe, much like Ms. Jordan said earlier. For those who wish to ensure we are protecting the sense of comfort and safety of all people, I, and I'm sure all of us here, welcome all of those suggestions. For those who come to advocate that we have to make a choice, that we have to choose to protect one group's humanity over another, I'm concerned about that. And for those who are, when faced with a stark discussion of racial disparity and treatment, particularly started by a black man or by anyone, if you should feel affronted, I really wish you'll consider why this concern for the well-being of all is such a spur to your discomfort, or to your comfort. To the specific issue at hand, although I recognize that some people have a positive attachment to the flag and line symbol, one that can be without any malice or any bad intent, few of those individuals have acknowledged that for another group of people, and especially those that already feel marginalized, this particularly nascent symbols association with our police causes great mistrust and affects their sense of safety and comfort when dealing with our police. And it's my opinion that allowing such mistrust to fester is harmful, particular to our hardworking officers, but also particular to our community as a whole. Much as Ms. Jordan said, it doesn't matter if it's one or 1,000. And that's why it can, it continues to be a discussion that we continue to rightfully have, which was a topic last month. Some folks said, why is this even something that's in your purview? Why is, why is this relevant here? Well, to me, it's pretty relevant because it affects how we interact with the government. We don't always have to agree about how to solve a problem, nor are any of us perfect problem solvers. But steadfast consideration of how to improve the community for everyone in all the facets of our humanities is a tenet we should all strive for and appreciate of each other. It's a noble effort for which one shouldn't be attacked, as Mr. Graham was last month. You know, it's, it's hard in this seat to balance a few things. We want to hear from everyone and give everyone a chance to speak this open dialogue that we talk about. It's hard to necessarily pounce on, on that, because we should love everyone to speak. But sometimes it needs a little reflection, like I needed to take this month and, and draft my thoughts together. I, I hope that's helpful. I think another thing that might be helpful is that there's some indication that there hasn't been a dialogue of some sort. There has been several instances of, in my opinion, open dialogue. And since then, it just was clear that there was going to be a détente of some sort at this point. And we're hopeful to, we were trying to kind of take care of it theoretically in-house, right? If this, as, as Mr. President said, if we're an organization and we're the leaders, we're trying to take care of it so that it doesn't get out of hand and out of control. And, you know, it's unfortunate if it appears that it has. I don't think that we're there at the point yet that it's completely out of control, much as President Lee said. I think there's still room in allowing us to work through this. But if, if that does not work, I, I don't disagree that some of these ideas that you have are valid. You can imagine that it might be awkward to do some of those ideas throughout the course of this simultaneously. It just is just how it works sometimes. Not for a lack of wanting to create a task force or a lack of wanting to create dialogue. That's, you know, much more open. But truly, we're just trying to resolve this and, and hope to, that they'll understand. But as Ms. Jordan rightfully said, if it's creating mistrust with one or a thousand people, that mistrust shouldn't be here with our government, with the police department, so. Coincidentally, just, I had the statement made, did not know it'd be saying it now, but thank you all for, for coming out.
I'll just add a couple of things, if I may. I think something that Erin, you'd mentioned. Yeah, there are other instances of departments and organizations using a symbol that have changed. So it's, this is not a unique thing to Springfield. It may be unique that the debate, so to speak, is going on so long without, you know, a good outcome, as, as I would define it. You know, they are a private organization, but I would just make one distinction in that it's all Springfield Police. So, you know, yes, the Girl Scouts are a private organization, but, but they're not affiliated with the township. So the Springfield PBA is only Springfield Police. It is only employees of Springfield Township. Now, they're not acting in their organization as an employee, and that's where it gets a little bit tougher. But it is unique in that they are, they do represent Springfield. So it is something that we talked about. And people have come and made, you know, the point like, why are you bothering them? They're a private organization, just like buzz off, and it just, it doesn't work that way. And I'm not prepared to look at our residents of color, who've traditionally been marginalized, and just say, we tried, but we can't do anything. I'm just not ready to say that. So that's going to be a little more uncomfortable. You know, so be it. There's, there's not a great, full agreement on this board. There's members of the board that don't want to compel them to do anything. And luckily, the, the majority of the board does not share that view, so. It's going to continue. And like I said, hopefully, I don't know what the ultimate outcome is, and I hope to, to mend some fences with where we are now. And I'm not going to give that up. And Eddie, I just, I hope you don't think I'm, I'm like putting you down on this, but like, the email you sent was on October 8th. It was on a Saturday afternoon. That's when you invited them. The meeting was on.
That was the email, as I stated earlier, that was sent out to everybody.
No, that was the email. There was.
How can you tell me no, you're what email I sent?
I can forward it to you, Eddie. I just looked at it. It's an email.
Maybe you're not listening to me, Jim. When we first started as the president of the NAACP, to put this all together, we got the committee together, and we sent out emails to all party.
So you're saying that this.
And my apologies for raising my voice, because that's not right.
So are you saying the email is not addressed to Chief Pico for the first time?
No, it was not.
Greetings. I hope this email finds you all. I would like to extend.
Maybe I'm not explaining myself correctly to you, Jim.
I'll forward you.
I sent out, that's the email that the board, that the committee stated they wanted to send to everyone. When we got the panel together, all emails went out to all the panelists inviting them. There was no response. Then another email, once we got the confirmation, another email was sent out. That's the email that you're reading.
All right. So that's Saturday, October 8th. You're telling me, and if there's another email that I didn't see, then I'll admit I'm wrong. You're saying before Saturday, October 8th, you sent an email, three weeks prior.
I think we're just going over and, over semantics.
No, I'm going over facts.
Okay, well, I, they weren't, they weren't invited, and they refused to come.
I'm just saying, it's, it's important for the record, because you framed it that they refused to come. My understa, and look, the chief may have not come no matter what. You may have given him six months notice and he wouldn't come. But the fact is, you gave him 11 days' notice on that email that invited him. And from my understanding, he was out of town for a funeral. So to just to characterize it for the public, that we invited them and they refused, that's just not a fair characterization. I mean, I'm with you on this. It's just not a fair characterization.
I'm sorry. All right, Commissioner Lee. I'm, I'm Mr. President.
I just wanted to add, I appreciate your leadership on this issue, especially Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Graham, and Commissioner Ratzavong. I just wanted to say, I do think, I really do think that what is needed, I understand, I'm only speaking for myself here. I, I understand that the PBA is a separate organization, and that you're in a, you know, kind of a bind with what, how much you can compel the PBA. I think personally, what I would want to see is leadership around, you know, leadership around the dialogue itself, right? And making sure that the police department is able to have, and the community are able to have productive conversations. And that's, that's what I'm personally, I'm not seeing happening or movement on, right? I appreciate all your efforts to try to resolve this issue with the PBA. I do kind of think that it is, it's one issue in the broader scope of issues that fall under the police community relations, right? And the trust between the community members and the police department. And I really think this meeting is showing, right? That we need sort of a third-party mediator to bring together the different parties involved to really hear each other, because I think that's really just not happening at this moment in time. So I just wanted to clarify. Did not mean to critique what has or has not been done in the past year. I completely understand that these are difficult issues, so did not mean to imply any.
No, it's fair. Thank you. And sometimes you need, you need a, a third party to, you got to step back from it. We're in it. We're, we're, not to use the word fight, but there's, I mean, you know, we're on the same part of the issue here. We're fighting about dates, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Emotions are high, especially on this issue, because it's, it's a really important issue. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. All right, this time we'll move on to our committee reports. I do not have a report this evening, so I will go to the chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
I had, did I have a report either?
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. I will go to the chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our recycling report this evening, please, please to announce that during the month of October 2022, Springfield Township residents recycled 156.5 tons of materials with a household or petition rate sufficient, petition rate of 75.9%. And that cost for the month was $28,351.48. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will go to the chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. We will move to the chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening is for the Shetree Commission. I moved that the Board of Commissioners appoint Lee Kowalski of Winmore and Jared Schwartz of Erdheim as alternate members of the Springfield Township Shetree Commission. An alternate member assists the commission with public education and outreach activities. And when necessary, may serve as a voting member if one or more regular members of the commission are unable to attend the meeting. In terms of service for Mr. Kowalski and Schwartz, will expire July 13th, 2024. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify it by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Please record your honest vote.
That will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We will go to the chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize in advance for the, the length of these reports, but we'll start with the bill listing. I moved that the Board of Commissioners approve the October check reconciliation of the amount of $2,425,656.33. And the November bill listing, the amount of $1,603,068.24. That's my motion.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Please indicate support by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Please record your honest vote.
Second, I'm pleased to announce the 2023 budget meeting schedule. Announcing the 2023 budget meeting schedules follows. Budget presentation will be made this evening to be followed by the budget hearing on December 14th at 7:30 in this room. And that will be followed that same night with the budget adoption on December 14th at 7:30 in this room. Regarding the presentation of the budget. Springfield Township Board of Commissioners proposes a balanced operating budget for 2023 of $18,697,151 with a real estate tax of 4.516 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. To summarize the impact on the typical residential taxpayer as a result of the 2023 budget projections, the taxpayer will realize no change to their 2023 real estate tax and a $12.56 increase to the annual refuse service fee. The 2022 real estate tax was the same as 2021, and the 2022 refuse service fee was $6.32 less than the 2021 refuse service fee. The typical household in Springfield Township with $175,400 property assessment will pay $792.10 in real estate taxes in 2023, which is the same as in 2022 and in 2021. The township is able to maintain the same tax rate as in 2022 due to the revenue increases associated with the earned income and other local enabling taxes, together with the decreases in capital expenses and recycling processing fees. These savings are offset by anticipated increases in employee wages and benefits, property liability and workers' compensation insurance premiums, medical benefits and contributions to the volunteer fire companies. The 2023 discounted refuse service fee will increase from $225.54 to $238.10, or 5.6% per household, due to increases in waste disposal fees, employee wages, and vehicle expenses. Pursuant to the terms of a new waste disposal contract, the Covanta Sustainable Solutions, the cost to dispose of household waste will increase from $62.03 per ton in 2022 to $75.24 per ton in 2023. The average monthly cost to process and market single-stream recyclables was $45.41 per ton in 2022. It is projected to decrease to $35.73 per ton in 2023. After increasing during the COVID pandemic, the amount of household refuse and recyclables collected by the township is projected to decrease by approximately 315 tons in 2023. The township will continue to fund its general budgetary obligations through traditional revenue sources, such as real estate, real estate tax, earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, mercantile and business privilege tax, licenses and permits, fines, and department earnings. In 2019, a local service tax was enacted whereby individuals employed within Springfield Township now pay $1 per week or $50 annually through a payroll deduction. Those who do not earn more than $12,000 annually are exempt from this tax. The township anticipates the receipt of an additional $30,000 in revenues from the local services tax in 2023. The 2023 preliminary budget will be made available for inspection in the office of the Township Manager at 1510 Paper Mill Road in Winmore, and in the Township Library at 8900 Hawthorne Lane in Winmore, beginning at 5:00 PM on November 11th, 2022. The 2023 preliminary budget will also be posted to the township website. The 2023 preliminary budget will also be posted to the township website on or before the above date. Summary copies of the budget are also available upon request. The Board of Commissioners will accept questions and comments on the budget at the workshop meeting on December 12th at 7:00 PM, and again, as part of a budget hearing in budget adoption on December 14th at 7:30. All aforementioned meetings will be conducted at the Springfield Township Administration Building at 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA. And that's the 2023 budget statement. All right. Now, regarding this month's zoning hearing board, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, November 28th at 7 o'clock in this building. And they will hear the following applications. The first is the application of Christina and Richard Shore, owners of the property located at 600 Maple Lane in Flower Town. The applicants are requesting a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling that would reduce a required 40-foot yard setback to 32 feet in depth. This is a corner property that has street frontage on both Maple and Hilltop. And this property is zoned within the residential district of Ward 6. Second application is from Maestros Real Estate LLC, equitable owners of the property located at 1213 Bethlehem Pike. The applicant has requested a special exception for the use of the property, seeking approval to increase the number of apartment units from nine to 11 with the conversion of the two existing office spaces on the first floor. Dimensional variances have been requested, and they're required for the minimum lot area requirements of 5,000 square feet per family unit and the two off-street per-unit parking spaces per-unit requirements. The property consists of 22,200 square feet of lot area and has 17 onsite parking stalls. The property is split zoned between the B1 Business District and BNC Residential Districts of Ward 1. Copies of those applications are held at the Community Development Office and can be reviewed upon request. Again, that zoning hearing board meeting for November will be on Monday, November 28th at 7:00 PM. And that, Mr. President, is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Sounds like a good. Let's go to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzavong.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, November 3rd, 2022, the Board of Commissioners had the opportunity to meet with four residents who are interested in serving as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. While the board found that each candidate was uniquely qualified and would make an excellent addition to the committee, there are presently only two vacancies. And I have to say, we had wonderful applicants, both for this and for planning. It's been a delight to see what a wealth of talent we have in our community. So I will make two motions today for two positions. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Robert McGrath of Windmore to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Dr. McGrath's term of service shall expire May 12th, 2025, as my first motion.
Excuse me, sorry. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just reiterate what Commissioner Ratzavong said. There's been a couple instances on advisory boards where we've had a lot of candidates going for one or two spots. And it really, it's been amazing that the level of experience and talent and people that were coming willing to to volunteer, we had it with the Planning Commission, we have it now with Parks and Recs, and it's truly hard to tell people. There's some amazing people that know you didn't get it, the volunteer job, but it just speaks to our, you know, our public and their willingness to do service, which is great. Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record your unanimous vote.
I also move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Dr. Lee Aberley of Windmore to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Dr. Aberley's term of service shall expire May 12th, 2024. That is my motion.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions?
Coincidence that they are both doctors.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record your unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratzavong. At this time, the board is once again open to receiving public comment. Okay, seeing as there are none, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before the adjournment, Mr. President, I would like to ask for an executive session after the discuss with the board testimony that was received today.
Michael, can we do that?
Yeah.
On the issue with Peter that was brought up here.
Talk about specifically.
I think it's.
Yeah, I think it's a question of seeking the advice of the solicitor and that's, that advice is always privileged and confidence.
Mr. President, outside that, I just want to thank all the public comments tonight. I can certainly appreciate, maybe just a couple of people said it was the first time they got it and said some things. And speaking solely for myself, I do take it all very much to heart. And while we differ on the board in terms of how we are looking to maybe address issues, and these are issues in general. You know, one thing I think we have been unequivocal on is unequivocal on our repudiation of bigotry, hate, racism, and all its forms. We've had many occasions, unfortunately, where we've had to invoke that over the last several years. And even every single department, but including our police department, I think has done a lot over the last several years in terms of, again, utilizing the feedback that we've gotten from the community and the importance of, whether it's oversight panels or sensitivity training and body cameras. And each one of those have been adopted into the department. So while there's differences and there's friction, and it just reminds me of the fact that in two weeks, I'm going to have to go to a Thanksgiving table and experience this on a much smaller microcosm level with parents that I'm like flabbergasted at because I don't understand that they have their views and in-laws. And I mean, just, you know, I think we all experience here, and we live in a very strange time. But it only goes back to sort of the imperative of fostering those environments where we can talk and listen to each other because, yeah, it's difficult. And whether it's here in our community or at our Thanksgiving table, we got to figure a way to get through it. But the one thing I just wanted to end on tonight is we really do agree on more than we disagree. But that, yeah, we'll work through it. But I really do appreciate, I personally appreciate all the public comments that were shared tonight.
Any other comments?
One more thing. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I really didn't want to take anything away from what Mr. Katuski said. He said it very eloquently, just highlighting civil service and civic service and the service of all of the public and particularly those veterans. My husband is a veteran, come from a veteran family. And I want to make note that although I know a lot of people will be taking the day off for many reasons and to theoretically honor Veterans Day, for all those veterans out there, I know this is a difficult week for many of you. It is a difficult week for many people I know. And I encourage you to, you know, find solace with each other or with any services you need. That I understand that. I'm sure people at this board respect your service and just want you to know that you are not alone in your journey. So that's it.
Well said.
And motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Can we have a second? Second has been made. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record your unanimous vote. Meeting is adjourned.